Ann Hart, Board Secretary.
Ted Redway, Town Planner. Would you like to do that again?
No.
Well, it didn't get -- didn't record. Now it is.
Okay. Where's Jim?
Oh, Larry.
It probably is.
Just got away from it.
He's coming there.
He comes over. That's why I didn't record.
That's why I didn't record. Okay, we're calling the planning board meeting to order. Start with a roll call. Dave Lowery.
My name is Bob Kuhn, Tom McKinnon, John McKinnon.
Rod Moore.
Ted Redway, Planner.
Ann Hart, Board Secretary.
Okay, on the agenda tonight, we have approval minutes of September 26th. Kimball gravel pit renewal and conditional use permit. Dubois auto salvage conditional use renewal. Item three, if we have time, would be proposal reasons for land use orders. Downtown business district two. Planners report, other business and public comments. So we'll start with minutes of the 26th of September. Everybody had a chance to read them?
Yeah.
Motion to approve as written.
Yeah, second.
Motion to approve as written, and seconded. All in favor?
Yeah.
All opposed?
One abstained.
One abstained. Okay, moving right on. Kimball gravel pit.
Kimball gravel pit. We have, as your staff notes indicated, Kimball gravel pit, pit was not advertised by the paper as it should have been. So therefore, we did not make that public hearing deadline. And I recommend, since we've already posted, I recommend that we postpone this until the 24th. The applicant had -- and I had -- the applicant has agreed to do that. And the -- although the wheels are in motion, that's correct. Don't know if he's not -- Chip said he wasn't going to be able to come tonight, so. The only thing you could use this time for would be an opportunity to discuss anything that you've seen out on the site. Because I know we've had multiple different trips out there. And that could be the only thing the applicant said he couldn't mind if you did discuss that. It's a beautiful time. That's the board's plan.
I think, from my perspective, I was out there with Tom prior a little bit early. And then myself and Marty were out there together. That constitutes three members. I think the other guys have seen the site. But we've seen, myself, Marty and Tom, nothing's been done there except more trees and grass growing in the pit. I don't think there's any major reason why we should be going back. Unless some of you guys feel differently.
I feel the same way. It's in good shape. That can change the accuracy.
Yeah.
Seven years old.
Yeah. It's pretty good. My inability to make it on Saturday, I stopped through this weekend, looked in, didn't see anything that turned out as me as positive.
If you compare it to the -- the grading plan they have on record, it's -- they haven't made many changes. They've actually smoothed off a couple of tough -- steep slopes. But there really hasn't been much taken out of there at all. And they say that, and I mean, if you look at the grading plan, it hasn't really changed at all.
In fact, there's a stockpile of material.
Cobblestones.
And nothing major.
Apparently, the owner of the property has taken a couple loads out, but that's about it. Wasn't significant enough to change anything in the grading.
I recall that pile of cobblestones there the last time we went.
Yeah.
So even that doesn't change.
Yeah.
That's the last time meeting, three years ago.
Jim? Yeah.
Okay, so the only issue was for the public hearing, which was scheduled for the...
24th.
24th.
Correct.
And that will be the 24th again, not the 24th?
Correct.
Question. What is an IT glitch for the paper?
Basically, they have problems with their computers. So they couldn't get download any of the electronic mail that's sent to them. These, whatever we send in, notices, it's always sent electronically. And they had problems and did not get ours out of time.
Yeah. I never knew what an IT -- didn't know what it was. That's why I asked.
That's the way they explained it. It was an IT glitch. Okay. And the applicant wasn't too upset about that, so.
Everything with the latest?
Well, they went down for like two days.
Well, they're -- but they're still within their timeframe for the...
For the 24th, yes.
Okay, so.
And actually, the owners' notices from the last one, they're already going through this email.
In light of the reports that I've heard, even though it wasn't an official sidewalk, in light of the reports from individual members who have seen this site, and the fact that the applicant has reported that no changes have taken place, that seems to be confirmed. Although it is our normal tradition to do a sidewalk before we process an application, I would make a motion that in this case, we suspend the necessity of an official sidewalk.
That's it.
Yeah, right.
Have a motion, and seconded. All in favor?
Yeah.
Opposed? Bob, can I ask a question real quick?
Yeah.
Do you have a copy of your planner's report?
You didn't get that?
I got it via email, but I didn't have a chance to print it.
Yes, I do. Could have mine. Thank you.
Scribbled on. I won't write on it anymore.
Do you need to answer? Well, I have the only one I created for myself.
I think the only thing that can assist. Is that for Dubois? Is that for Kimball?
Kimball or Dubois.
I was hoping for Dubois, because we have one in that.
There you go.
Do we have to have a motion to set a public hearing?
Might as well.
On the topic mentioned, you hold.
Well.
But we have to...
We already...
Prove it. We have to prove it.
I make a motion, we postpone discussion of Kimball pit until we reschedule the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
All opposed? Oh, you want to be on here any second?
Is it eight o'clock or is it nine?
Well, moving right along here. Okay.
I hear a proposal.
Next item on the agenda, Dubois auto salvage conditional use permit.
Let's see. This is a situation where it is a standard three-year conditional use renewal that all auto graveyards have to go through in the town. And the issue here was that the applicant got their application in in July, but the application had expired in June. So the issue was, well, now what? And the board had discussed at meeting, you recall, we had practically no meetings in August and September. We had no courtrooms in those time periods, so we had one meeting. And that time period, you discussed whether or not you have the authority to renew this permit, even though it -- because the permit had expired. I had talked to the town attorney about this issue and had gotten her input on it. And her input was essentially that the board would have to act. If they were not going to renew this permit, they would have to take action officially and not just say, "We can't review it." You can review it. You have the authority to review it. And you have the authority to act on it. She stated essentially that you really should go through the process of reviewing. So that's why it was put on the agenda, because the town attorney recommends that we actually take action and review this in the normal course of action.
So regardless of the fact that it's expired, the board can still act on the permit and can still, can in effect decide to renew the permit?
Yes, and frankly speaking, you've had precedent for doing this in the past. Quite a few times with a lot of applicants, not just this applicant, but a number of different applicants. You've taken that. So yeah, you can in fact consider -- first of all, you shall consider this. And the second thing is that you can in fact renew this if you so deem it. You can also deny it, because the permit's expired, meaning it violates the terms of the original conditional use permit that was issued in 2010. However, do recognize that you have -- you have in the past renewed permits that had expired for much longer than just a month. So the issue here is that I have not been out there, but the applicant has submitted materials, the renewed materials, and shown us basically the same map as they had in 2010 when they received their renewal. And the board probably should go out and do the sidewalk and do diligence looking at this application. Determine whether or not there have been any changes. The applicant indicates there have been no significant changes in terms of the type of material or the extent of the auto graveyard. And therefore, they feel that the application really is -- does not constitute any significant changes from the existing conditions or the conditions in 2010.
So I guess the first item is, we want to accept the application.
Make a motion to accept it.
Before you do that, Mr. Chair, I have to repeat myself as a matter to the applicant.
Make a motion to accept it.
We're accepting the application.
We want to consider each.
Yes.
Exactly. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Any -- well, first of all, any discussion?
I think it's probably not the worst thing, but I've been a month there, I don't think, so. That's not much in the big picture, so.
Yeah, I kind of feel the same way. This is minimal timeframe that it expired. Plus, we need to have a little bit of uniformity in our procedures. So I gotta go along with the thought we should be accepting this for consideration. You have a first, a second, all in favor?
Yeah.
Okay. I guess the next thing we'll just propose a sidewalk, right?
Well, yeah, that's one of the critical factors of doing it. We just go out and compare what the applicant is getting into a sidewalk and make sure that it coincides with that.
Mr. Chair, can I ask the applicant a question?
Sure.
Can you guys have that areas, date that to give the boundary in two weeks?
Yeah, the post, yeah, the post of there for the last time we went to the post.
Oh, yeah, permanent, I think, right? Okay, just want to -- just want to reassure. Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we schedule the sidewalk two weeks from today prior to our meeting here. All right.
Do you want to?
Probably take about a half hour.
Yeah.
The only question is, my major interest here. At this time of night, it's hard to see anything. So we do not have daylight.
Five o'clock would be dark.
And I don't pop at five.
I'll be away that weekend, so I wouldn't be in it. I'm excited to meet you next week. I'm not sure. Weekend sidewalks are such a good idea.
Sorry, what?
Well, we haven't had too much success with weekend sidewalks in the past.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to say.
Who can make it at five o'clock on Thursday? I know I can.
I can.
I can't, because I don't get out.
So if you have three, we have four.
I got customers coming in and out.
Four is important.
Make it, Tom.
Yeah, I think I can. Yeah. Five o'clock, it'll be enough light?
Should be.
I don't know. I don't know what the tick tock says.
Hey, what's the earliest you can make it, Tom?
I can probably be there at four o'clock.
What about your change?
Probably four thirty.
Bob, you're retired. Anytime, right?
Well, that granddaughter would bawl, but I can probably work around it.
Four thirty?
Four thirty.
Yeah.
You're available.
Yeah, I'm here all day.
I'm available. So let's make it four thirty.
You have a big meeting then.
Oh, no, October 24th.
Right.
October 24th.
Four thirty.
All right.
Who's the second on that motion?
Bob.
No, Bob made the motion. Who seconded it?
I think I did.
Okay.
No.
Arguing maybe?
Yeah, yeah. Somewhere around there.
Okay, so we got a -- I know, we got a motion to sidewalk a time. Everybody that's going to be there is going to be there, right? Okay.
I won't be there.
Four thirty? Four thirty.
Like any sidewalk, it's going to tell you, "I'll be there now."
Yeah.
You don't have to.
Well, that's something we'll address on the business of the end of meeting. Okay. What else we got on the agenda here?
I have a few questions, Mike. I just have a curious question. Why is it that we get a permit for the same junkyard from the selectmen like every year? And one from you guys every three years? I mean, we have a post-it and the paper and everything. And Jim comes out and he inspects the place every year and stuff like that. I just don't know why there's two of them. We've got two -- one we have to post on our wall. And the other one we get from you guys, we don't have to post, but. Do you guys have any idea?
Yeah. That's a question. Yeah, the reason is because you're getting two permits. You're getting one from the state, which is your state permit. And the selectmen are giving you a business license to operate, correct?
No, it's a permit.
Yeah, it's a permit from the state to operate a motor vehicle graveyard. And the selectmen have to approve that. Automobile graveyard in this district is a conditional -- well, actually, it's a non-conforming use, but they are conditional uses. And they require conditional uses for certain activities like gravel pits, auto graveyards, a couple other things, solid waste, a number of different things. Are all three-year permits, and they have to be renewed every three years. So that's the land use order. So you get the land use orders, you got the selectmen, and you got the state. All three different jurisdictions. Okay.
Set.
Okay.
The next item on the agenda. Downtown business district, decision with internal circulation. If I remember correctly, that, you want to give us a layout.
I was going to give you some ideas. Well, they're going to be a layout, guys.
Something to discuss for a half hour.
Well, yeah, we can discuss this for a half hour. So we can discuss it for longer than...
That just scares me.
No, we can discuss it for a half an hour. Actually, we could probably do it in fifteen minutes. And get out of here early if you want to.
I like that motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. So you asked me to do some plotting of what we could -- where we could put this down, these roads. And I think we had talked before, we've gone back and forth on the question. Should we establish roads? Should we not establish roads? And we came to the conclusion, and actually, we've got some help from some professionals in the audience who say, "Look, you know, it just makes it easier for property owners and for designers to know generally what you're thinking of doing." And it helps them plan the use of your land in the future. So please plot out with your conceptual ideas where these roads should go. So I've got some -- what I basically did, I'll give you some process real quick. Took the aerial photograph, and this is upside down. As you can see from the aerial photograph, everything's extremely clear. You can understand exactly what's here, right? Okay, that's the problem. Too much clutter, too much information. This is Route 1 here. This is Limerick Road. This is the river right through here. This is blah, blah, blah. This is Old Post Road here. This is log cabin here, campground. So the issue was, okay, getting roads back into the back portions so that we can have connectivity, especially between back parcels that some of which are landlocked, or some of which only have access from Old Post Road. We made some general assumptions or general conditions in plotting out where we wanted to put these roads. We wanted to put them in a location that would facilitate development in the back. We wanted the roads to be in a location that wouldn't interfere with existing uses. We wanted to keep some of the roads away from residential properties that could be impacted. We didn't. We wanted to try to avoid connections, well, we wanted to avoid connections to other major arteries in a way so that they would not be used as bypasses. And although there's a lot of tweaking that can be done, oh, and also, there is the issue of site constraints and existing uses. So this is all the information we used, including topo. It's got topo, wetlands, watercourses, existing buildings on it. And I had to, in order for it to be legible, I had to take the aerial portion out, but leave just about everything else in. And this is what we get. Again, campground, camp -- excuse me, campground, log cabin, Route 1, the river. This is Old Post Road through here, River Road. And our district is basically this area. We have two sets, two sides of the road, two possible locations in which we can put some roads. Put some roads and some real conflict areas that may be unsurmountable in some ways.
Ted, before you get going, can you explain what the dark areas are on that? Are they NWI wetlands?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I should pull that up. All of the dark areas here are National Wetlands Inventory wetlands. They're on here because they're significant of size. They're mainly, they're mainly, well, no, no, most, a lot of them are swamp wetlands, which means pleistocene forested, they're forested wetlands. But there's a number of them that are emergent and shrub swamps, meaning alder swamps. And they are also cattail swamps, cattail marshes. So we have some that are, that are rather critical in certain areas. You'll notice that areas that we know are really boggy aren't shown on here because they're not large enough or significant enough, or actually weren't picked up by the National Wetland Inventory. But it gives us a good idea of where we have some significant site constraints. Wow, that's a serious problem down there. We have some other ones that are significant, and these are not necessarily accurate, by the way. But they do give us an idea of where we can put things.
Are they accurate in location or inaccurate in size?
Relatively accurate in location. Some of them have, in fact, been ground truth. Size is another issue. I think some of the, some of the extents, some of the sizes don't work. They don't even fit in some of the contours either. But of course, these are USGS contours, and they have limited reliability as well. On here are USGS contours, which also give us an idea of exactly, they're five-foot contours, and give us an idea of where we have topographic constraints. I would like to put the buildings, but I don't have layers with buildings in here. And that's really unfortunately not here, so we might put them down on the table here and you folks can look, but I'll only give you the overview. We have A, which is on the west side, and B, which is on the east side of Route 1. What we're looking to do is get some connectivity between the back portions of land that we've identified as being within the, essentially, the DB2 district. Now, starting with the A, I think we had talked about this before. Where we have an existing road in here, this is Strickland Lane, which is actually a private way, small private way. We have a lot of property out here. This area all in here is going to be now part of the DB1 district. Our DB2 district right now is residential. There are no houses. There are a house here, excuse me, a house here, but that's also actually a business. It's a business and a residence. These are houses here. The extent of our real business district in this area is right about here. Then we have some residential houses. So we're extending that residential, that non-residential area, or the mixed-use area, up a little bit further. This is the large farm that you all know. Marty, what's the name of that farm? Anybody? West Farm? No, not west. It's the...
Little very south.
Not somewhere, no, that's way down on Limerick. Big. Yeah.
You want to cross from the llamas, right?
Yeah.
Cross from the llamas?
Wait.
No, the llama's on the other side of the road.
Wait, wait, you guys, no. This is Limerick Road, this is Limerick Road down close. The llama's way up here. Right. Okay?
No.
This, yeah. There they are, right there. I'm sorry. They're right there. No, this is a, wow. This is a big field, big field. Actually, it's like, it looks like about a, it's a Fiddle style farmhouse out there.
Yeah.
You know, we all are.
Yeah, right next to Strickland's.
Just right next to Strickland's, exactly. I was hoping you'd know the name. Well, so we're talking about, we're looking at running this road. I would love to run it right up through here. That would make sense, but I've got some real constraints. I've got some real constraints and I've got, wow, this is where we really don't like to do comparisons like this. We've got some real constraints here in that I can't run it right up through here because look what I've got right there. Sitting right there. Could run around the back.
Isn't that where the storage area is?
That's what those are. That's Atlantic Storage. So this, we're only really providing access for one, two, three, four lots here. And then coming through here to Sam's Run, or Sam's Road, right here. This is undeveloped, as you can see. Runs along the edge of that and makes this accessible. Now, we can even go down Sam's Road, which is residential here. And then we have businesses all down and through here. Certainly opens up this back portion, although it is a little swampy. And/or we can continue across into this area here. And we all know this area in through here as being part of what was the Village Center area. Gives the concept basically of making a connection in through to Campground Road. Now, that's kind of a violation of our original terms, that we didn't want to create bypasses. And that might be a problem. What I think we would end up doing is probably have an internal circulation here and then connect to that and not disturb Sam's Road. But that's a lot of expensive road for what I call single-loaded roading. And whenever you build a road, you want to be able to create lots on both sides of the road. Because that reduce it, well, that doubles your value of your road. It's not different than building, let's say, a multifamily unit or a hotel where you build a corridor and you only have rooms on one side of that corridor. You want rooms on both sides of the corridor, and then usually want that with roads. There's no good way to do that with road number A through here. We can hug and we can, we could potentially do a kind of jerry-mandring thing, which would be a possibility, to get, to get a double-loaded. But quite frankly, this is pretty much built out. As you know, Atlantic is built out, pretty much. You can see what's keeping them from expanding further. They have a large wetland there. And they'd have to do a Tier 1 application in order to deal with it. So this is, this is a lot of expense, maybe not necessarily a lot of benefit. But it does open up areas, this lot is pretty much, these lots right now are all, you can see them all. They're all basically landlocked. Can't do anything about them.
And Ted, that large parcel where the farmhouse sits that's open will remain as, in the proposed zoning, will remain as residential?
Yeah. Yeah. Unless you want to zone it.
Where, how, that A where it is, is right there.
Yeah, this is that, that property.
Is that the farm?
Yeah, this is the farm. It is a huge piece of land.
Correct.
It is a huge piece of land.
That's up to the owner.
Well, it's always up to the owner, you know, whether or not they want to...
But I understand the owner had died, and I don't know if it's how it's, who's in control of it right at this time.
I don't know.
I'm just saying.
I understand. I don't know. I mean, that's, that really changed, that's a game changer. If you were to include this in there, that would be an immense game changer. It would also extend this mixed-use district much further out, Limerick Road, than what you originally envisioned.
I also think if you did that, it takes away from the characteristics of the town. You want some rural character, open fields, nice farmlands. You open that up, the business, what are you doing?
Yes, but the question also to ask is, you want to, if that is the same... Yes, but the question also to ask is, you want, if that is, say, broken up, okay? As the landlord, you want all houses in there?
Well, you can't fill the business...
No, I'm just asking a question. I'm just asking a question.
I can't see us trying to put that into our business district.
Also, I think it's worth pointing out that we, even if we all agree it would be a great spot for business, I think we're gonna get some resistance from all the neighbors.
Water residential...
This is a residential subdivision right here.
Probably from all the force against that.
We have a couple of, we have a farm over here, this is the sheep farm.
There's Bert.
So how far in total that road takes up, what, a tenth of the district and we already got a lot of problems?
Well, I haven't really, you know, this, the width of my, of my... That's a, that's, that's a much wider road than it actually would be on the ground. That is the width of my, my marker, it's more than fifty feet, trust me. But it gives you a general idea, what it does is it gives you the idea, if we're gonna hug the boundaries here, we're gonna free up one, two, three, four, five parcels that could in fact, well, this one's already committed, excuse me, one, two, three, four, five possibly, and then this one, six parcels, that would in fact be much, much more beneficial as, as businesses here, but they're backland parcels. This makes them frontland parcels, but then we also have the potential of this being used as a bypass, which would not sit well with this neighborhood, probably. I'm not sure the Stricklands would like it either, but, but then again, they've, they've been positive to the idea of zoning that area, rezoning that area, and making their road. If they're gonna put it in the road, they, they tried to do it development two years ago, and the cost of the road, the number of units that were gonna create was prohibitive, so it wasn't gonna work. So their, their aspirations to do something residential in there just was dashed by the economics. The road costs more than the lots were gonna yield. Well, business properties probably will yield more than single-family homes on small lots, which is what they were looking at. But, you know, again, this is one of the few possibilities that we have. Probably get some resistance from the Sam Road people, this is, this is residential. It's a private way. It's a private way. I'm sure there'd be some, some resistance there. That's why I show us the dashed, I also show us the dashed going through here, too. Clearly, they wouldn't wanna make this a dead end, so to make this work, it would have to either go through there or go through here, and yes, whatever would happen in here would be much more secure.
Where does the Sam Road come out?
Route One.
I know, where are you wanting?
Two, uh, two places down, across the street from where? Just before...
It says Sam's Way on it. Comes right up, road right out you hit.
Just runs parallel to the garage, across the street.
Right, in the road.
In the road.
That, that route is involved quite a bit of ledge, I recall.
Where?
Isn't that back behind the Atlantic? Very ledgey.
Yeah, this, Atlantic is here, this is, is, it may have some ledge, yes, it does have some exposed ledge, you're right, from your memory, it's relatively flat ground. But to put, found, put footings in, absolutely, you're gonna have to blast. Or you're gonna just have to lay a slab on, you know, well, you'd still have to foot it.
Most businesses use, put a slab on.
Thank you, all right, I'm going home now. So this, we always knew this was problematic, and it confirms that it is problematic, it is difficult. That's a very difficult one, and I'm not sure we're gonna get a good enough return on it. However, it is a way in which these parcels, a road has to go in there to make those parcels, which are now part of the, the DB2, DB2, feasible. And yes, it can be a private way that the Stricklands do, because they do control this land. Certainly, they can do it, but if you do something like that, you certainly would like to have a second means of egress.
I can have a, this is different than what I see as being an idea, I think. Those roads might work for the...
They're dropping, they're drooping.
For the five or six properties that, that it's going through.
Yep.
But it does nothing for the businesses along Route One. They're, they're, there's still no, there's still no access from Route One, so the, if, uh, how would anybody know there's a business back there unless, unless they're kinda going out of their way, they know about it already. So it won't get, there'll be no visibility, no sign of Route One for those businesses. But also, I don't know if anybody's been in Saco where the Terren's Pub is and the Pines and all, these people used to be there, and they're, they're all connected, you can go from one to the other, and they're probably no more than eighty feet from, from the actual businesses on, on Route One. And I've done it many times, going from one place to another, so you start with Anthrach and then, and Bergkam, and you stop in for Bear, and then, and, and you never have to walk through Route One. It's all, and a lot, there's a lot of people go back and forth.
Back into the first lot.
It's probably no more than, what, four hundred feet from Route One?
Yep, and you've got a half acre and quarter acre lots, that's why, on Stewart, which is why you can do that.
But we do have, there, there seems to be some line along the back of some of the properties on Route One that...
We do have this line, so if we say, let's move over here. If we say, let's move over there, and that is something I did look at, going along this line. Certainly, we could do something along this line. My problem is connectivity here to Limerick. We don't wanna do Limerick, certainly you could do, it would be advantageous to do something along like this, but these properties already have frontage, right now.
But it's for the, it's for the DB2.
It's really to provide access in that way.
It's at the rear of, what you want the connectivity is at the rear of the property that's up on Route One.
Yeah, ideally, you want, you want connections between the DB1 properties and the DB2 properties, exactly what Tom started with. That's ultimately what we want, absolutely.
Both, both sides.
Benefits everybody, because everybody gets everybody else's business, there's no going out to Route One, taking a life and going back in. It doesn't help any, in fact, it's detrimental to everybody. The problem is, though, in this area, we, it's, this is a tighter situation than what we've got back here. It's a much tighter situation, we can come along back through here if we wanted to.
But then you're only servicing two ones.
I'm only servicing that lot there and this lot here, and then I run into this big, big, there's Atlantic, so I have to do this. Well, I could do that, sure, I could do that, but look at all the road I've created. Can I punch through here? Sure, I can punch through.
Well, yeah, but I only see three lots at one.
So that's why it's... So the cost, so the cost benefit, if they just not be there, maybe prohibited. In which case, these lots maybe should be taken out of the, the DB2, I don't think that one should. Or else, or else you keep them in and say, look, you gotta combine.
Well, or prevent, acquire and prevent connectivity through when other lots are developed.
Now, let's say we do that, let's say we say, okay, Strickland Lane, we'll just leave that a private way there as it is right now, and I haven't approached George on this, but I'm just doing this because we've had talks and passed on. And I think, you know, let's say, let's say we say, okay, we're not gonna put in this road, and then we have all these lots, Strickland lots through here. They, the only way they're gonna make this work is either they do this themselves or they come in through one of these other lots here. And that's where, you know, that's, again, that's where we're gonna let it do, happen organically and not do it in plan. So we can say, we hope that you guys work together, and if you come in, we're gonna want you to put in some, some, issue, your parking lot's gotta, is designed so it can connect to the next parking lot when that, when and if that ever comes in. We can do it that way, sure.
How large are these two parcels?
These two parcels?
Yeah.
Which parcels are you talking about?
The one with the used, well, the first one.
They're about five acres, six acres, I believe, no, more than that, they're ten acres.
This one here, this one here.
Yeah, this, this is about, this is, let's see, he was gonna put six on there. This is, that was about ten acres, this is about twelve, twelve, what was Atlantic? I'm sorry, I didn't pronounce.
Limerick was eighteen.
Was it eighteen?
Limerick was originally...
Eighteen, is that what that was?
Yeah.
And was it twenty, eighteen?
Yeah.
Okay. So they're, they're all over ten acres.
Ted, do you know if those two parcels that say are immediately, yeah, right there, those, no, just to the, to the west, yeah. Do they have any legal access to Route One or somewhere else?
No.
They don't?
In fact, they really don't even have legal access now, 'cause they're, they're driveways, they're not private ways. They haven't established a, you know, a legal private way that, that gives them frontage. They're effectively landlocked land, properties in order to, to...
Not even an easement across other?
No, they have easements, but they just don't have a right-of-way established. You know, if you look at the area, you'll see that they've got a driveway.
Where'd they connect to?
Connects to Strickland's, it basically, here's, here's a house here, okay? This is George's brother, this is George's land right here, this is his house. Yes, George Strickland, this is, this is my, this is his mom's trailer. This is actually one lot, it's not drawn properly, but it's one lot. Here's the drive, the, the road basically comes up like this, and then there's a, there's just a wood road coming up through here, and there used to be, you can't see it here 'cause we've got some dense conifers, but it comes into here, too, and they're just, it's just a wood road, that's all it is. Now, this one's got a, a big wetland in it, and that's a bit of a problem there, too, so we're gonna... And we know what that ground is like, 'cause we were there during the Atlantic Storage, when we were going, when they did their expansion, and we bought that ground. Guess what there? But it's a runway, it's wet everywhere, so...
The only other way you could, it was at one time, before Atlantic Storage, there are two lots there below Atlantic Storage. Yeah, one is a vacant lot at the present, which was also at the same time broken off and subdivided, because that used to be, that was part of, that lot there is Hebert Smith's, okay? Which was originally part of the Atlantic Storage area throughout there at one time, before Atlantic Storage came in, because it actually covered all the way down to where SL Tech was, 'cause that was all at one time, all one property, before it was broken up.
Yeah, so this is, that was SL Tech right there.
Yes, but turn, that was all, 'cause that was where the airplane hangar was. And that was all at one time, one property. But the only other way to come in off Route One would be through where Hebert Smith's is at the present time, because you do not have enough setbacks, I think, to try and put a roadway in. But there has been discussion about that by different owners, we'll say.
Okay. There's, you know, certainly combining lots, selling and combining, or subdividing lots off to, to, to increase area and area that has frontage, Strickland Route One is another way of doing it. Running, I mean, we have a vacant area here, John correctly pointed out that we have a ledge here, but driveway certainly along this boundary here could accomplish the same thing. But, you know, again, you wanna double-load these things as much as possible, because, you know, roads are expensive. You wanna get as much land out as possible, it's a tough area to get those roads in. So it's gonna have to drive...
It would be as tough as ledge-wise as up in the BE district, the BI district, that's all it...
No, that's like the Bursheus versus the Homolius, yeah, in terms of constraints. So, but that's, I mean, that appears to be one of the feasible ways to do it. There's lots of other ways, there may, there are alternatives, but I wanted to show you what looked like one of the better alternatives that opened up a lot of land. Certainly, connections could be brought between these two, this could be dropped down along through here, although I don't know why you'd wanna do that, but you could. 'Cause now, now then, you know, it doesn't matter, you could go through, cross through here and up through, but I think this is a vacant lot here, these are occupied, and that's actually a business. That's a residence.
Is that Sam's Pond?
Yeah, that's Sam's Pond. So it's not, not the greatest situation, we'd actually have better luck doing this connection. And I'm not saying that you can't do this, but this, this yields more results than this does.
Question, well, you have that dotted line...
Yes.
On Sam's Road.
E2, what I call A2.
No, I'm just saying where, where Sam Road is. Am I, am I looking at that correctly? Is that road actually extending back farther beyond your...
Yes, this road does, this is residential, though.
Yeah, but is there...
These are all residential here.
But is there actually the road?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, the road goes all the way to the end, like, in fact, Josh West just extended this road out, and he's got his, this is very funky, it doesn't look like this anymore. But Josh West just extended out his road, and you, you know, it'd be great if you could've connected these two, 'cause they naturally, they did connect at one point, it looks like. It looks like they were naturally connected, except there, this house that's on this is actually the middle of the road. So that kinda killed that idea.
But, yeah, but is that, that road there, you can't build on a road, or was it an easement?
No, it was a right-of-way, it was a private right-of-way. But it was a private right-of-way owned in, in, by...
The family.
Yeah, the whole family, not by that individual property. So, I don't know, I don't wanna get involved in what happens there, okay?
Lot of constraints.
Lot of constraints on that. Yeah, we don't wanna go any further than that on Sam's Road, and we'd have to talk to Sam about it anyways, 'cause I believe he has, he owns it, so... But if somebody were to, let's say if the Stricklands were to sell to somebody who was interested in combining all these lots, I mean, this at least gives them an idea of, one of the, one idea of how you could make some linkages between them.
On, on that A thing, was it Strickland's land? If you did approve that, approve that road as you show us here off of Limerick, moving up towards Sam's Way and back up along Cabin. Could you make that, how the Stricklands, let him have the option of having some of that industrial, 'cause that would give him a heck of a lot more money and access to his land on the backside if he wanted to sell it, where you said somebody passed away, he might wanna sell it, that'd be good, good industrial land for the town.
You mean this, you mean this farm?
That's a big farm, that's the old horse farm.
I mean, a few hundred feet to the west, where you've got that A...
That's the horse farm.
Was changed into industrial if they wanted to do it.
Excuse, it's nice or something.
I mean, that would give you, it'd make the roads out, you'd have a heck of a lot more...
Yes, it would, it'd be great to, then I can double-load that thing and get, you know, get some real return, make it much more attractive, leaving me a lot more land on it. That, that's a put-lot button, I mean, I wasn't willing to go there, but that is a legitimate question to ask.
You're talking the return from the taxes on a, a business that would come in to recapture...
The cost of the road.
The cost, yeah, the cost of, the real value is in the property.
Yes, the, the value's in the property, but the value is only realized if you need a road. When we're trying to create a, a road that makes sense, or a corridor that makes sense, that's gonna yield a decent return where somebody wants to do this. It's a tough area, but, you know, Valley brings up a real good point, I mean, this is a historic property. I don't know, I don't know all the history, but I know the building's historic. I know it's pretty rocky land down and through here, as you know, the ponds here and this...
Where's the upper edge of B2, it looks like we're...
We're on the upper edge of B2, B2 follows these lines.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we're...
We're on the edge, we're on the edge of B2, so instead of piercing the heart of it, like we talked about, we're actually going to the edge of it, you know? Which makes it more, is this what we're doing?
Yeah, that would be, that would be one-sided business on there.
This, this lot's out, because this lot's pretty much developed, that one's out, so just think of this as a whole of it. So you got this, you basically got this horseshoe series of lots here. Surrounding it. Which you could easily get your own access in through around like that. But you have to assemble it. The only way that George's land here becomes useful is if you can get access from here or from here.
But also, you follow that wetland there.
Yeah.
No, you follow that wetland there at the present time.
This one or this one?
Both of them. If you follow that wetland there at the present time.
Yeah.
It has been so overgrown, the drainage, okay, is not really flowing except when you have high water, okay? Because you actually, on those two areas, your drainage actually flows to the old Limerick Way.
Yes, that's true.
And that wetland has been grown because of not the proper, because of the overgrowth.
There's no question that, you know, this, this is only as an indicator, is not gonna show us what the, you know, what the actual constraint, all the constraints of the land are. And that would be determined by somebody actually doing this stuff. Making inquiries because they see this and say, hey, that might be a great idea. Let me go out and do a little few test points and walk the land and say, whoa.
I'm not even sure I like the idea of the road being residential on one side and business on the other. It kinda breaks that connectivity between the two businesses that was in vision to begin with.
So another is, the whole thing, you're saying, keep this going. Cause this is a residential.
Yeah, but I...
It's a residential road up to, well, business, business, nothing. I don't think you say anything.
Yes, there is.
I think the point is that road is too far west.
Right. Oh, yeah, yeah, that is.
You got the garage.
But I think, for, I mean, I hate to speak for you, but that, that road where it's shown. Isn't half on one side, it isn't gonna have business on it. It's gonna be up against residents. The other side, the businesses can take advantage of it.
Road is too far west.
Right through the heart of the business district, so both sides can get a little, make use of it.
Okay, so I'm gonna have to go through Sam's house, huh?
Well, maybe you don't have to go.
Maybe not, maybe not.
Maybe you can do this. Overgrown to Long Haven or Camp Rock, maybe.
You could, you could go this way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, not redeveloped.
Yeah, house right there, try that. Run it along the side of Sam's Farm.
Well, you could, you could actually drop it below that. If you ran along through here, you're still giving the Stricklands access. They got access here, access here. This is gone, because this is Atlantic. So this is only, this is only single loaded on one side, four, I don't know, five hundred feet.
No, it goes six hundred and seventy-five feet. Six hundred and thirty-five, cause that goes to the back of my property.
Your property here, this is you, right?
Six hundred, six hundred, yeah.
That's you.
Right there.
Maybe Marty will be willing to sell the town some land.
Marty, he'll build the road.
What'd you say, Marty, you wanna sign the deal right now?
Why? Why take my subject system away from me?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, see, that's... The pile's deep.
We don't know what, if any road you could, we think is the only...
Can't even get a street light, how am I gonna get public sewer?
But you need to do it individually. Yeah, see, that's, that's, we're gonna have a problem there.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, to me, we're trying to build a square pegging around a hole like that.
Yeah.
But it's not, it's, that corridor is not accomplishing any of the objectives that we're looking to do.
You could leave it as a pose, if the landowner wants to.
If you can make it work.
I think this is more of a dash line than this is. I think this is actually more feasible than this is.
And I think our goal can be to look at any, any builds coming and encourage that kind of connectivity if it, if it seems to work for the property. I mean, any road, you ideally need anything there. You know, you're, you're limiting the use of that property. You're limiting where they could potentially put it subject. We don't know what that land lay is and where they have to site a house and what they gotta do, you know?
Well, we'd go a little further than this.
Yeah, no, well, well, I, no, I, I do want, but there's so many other, I think, points we'll pick. There's so many other constraints up there that this, that area doesn't seem to be conducive to the overall concept of the B1, B2, and that shared arrangement in between the two. It just, it doesn't look like it's going to...
Move to the next section.
Yeah.
Yeah, it might be, it might just, it may not be able to go through. I might just have to do something like that.
Well, I mean, it may be over on that side. We just have a statement in the ordinance that says, you know, provision needs to be made for interconnectivity between parcels.
Wherever feasible.
Where feasible.
Yeah.
And it leaves it up to the board to assess where the feasibility is. Or what's feasible.
Money will make it feasible.
Hey, you're, you're right. And there's a, you know, you look at several of those parcels and if something of scale were to come in, they gobble up a few of them all at once.
Yeah.
But again, that area is really encroaching into residential.
Whatever.
Yes?
Well, this is vacant and I got a house here.
Yeah, and along the Limerick Road.
And a house there.
And along the Limerick Road.
Oh, this is, this is all vacant.
It's all vacant.
On the other side of the road, if you have, on, on, on the southern side of the Limerick Road. Okay, this is, that's all residential there, so any business there is gonna have increased traffic for residences in that area. If the residents don't approve it, that's fine, but, you know, that's, to me, that's beyond the scope of the DB1 and DB2 interconnectivity that you folks have been talking about.
Well, this is on the, this is DB1, it's a DB2 line right here.
DB2 and residential line.
Yeah, it's right here.
So the scope of what you guys have been talking is not there, it's the other line, it's DB1 and DB2.
Yeah?
So, yeah, so that's...
So to me, that's, move on to the next one. You guys have been asking us now for, you know, I think you've got better options down there. You've got some other options that are more feasible than that, right?
Well, I think, I think, yeah, this is all, I think I told you at the last meeting, I thought, thought that this was gonna be a tough sell. It's gonna be a tougher home, and it is, it turns out to be. Better to assemble parcels. So, the aim two, I don't think there's any question, any development here, they're going, basically, you're gonna get aggressive design in here of some sort. Whether it's a, this guy, a serpentine to get there, or whatever. But you're gonna have two access points. You're gonna have two entrances here. The key thing is, how do we want those two entrances for this parcel to connect to anything else in there? And that's the issue. If this goes bye-bye, then this will stand on its own. They'll do it themselves.
So is that property owner Ted? That's a big piece right there.
That's...
That's a forty-five acres across the street from Metley's.
That's Cynthia Hopkins. She's from...
Massachusetts.
Andover, Massachusetts. So, yeah, and she's, she's in constant contact. She's trying to, very honestly, she's, she's looking for a buyer for the project. Not just for the property, for the project, for the village project. Well, it's a good, frankly speaking, it's a good design. It's a good project. It'd be very beneficial for the town. It's a mixed-use project too. It has more business than residential, but it has residential, it has business. Small-scale stuff, it has a, it has a core center right in through here. It's a good project. When that model, that kind of development becomes saleable. You know, it's pretty heavy doldrums, right?
What was your proposal, that we had a village center?
Yeah, your village center was basically, let's understand, that was a TIF district that you were voting on.
What? We never had TIFs.
No.
No, we never had TIFs.
That was, what it was is, it was going to be a community project in which you were going to get some grant money for it, correct?
Yeah, we did get a hundred thousand dollars.
You're gonna get additional grant monies because you're gonna put the town hall in. And, and basically, you're gonna accept land and get grant money to put project, part of the infrastructure to the project. That was the concept.
It was never proposed that way.
Eventually. We'd been stupid not to tip.
It was never proposed that way, because at that time, there were no TIFs in this town at all.
Right, but it's still around quite a bit. At the time that you did that, TIFs were reused all over.
Not in this town.
I know that. Cause we still have that in this town.
We still don't.
So, but that's a viable project. Regardless of how people feel about the town's, the town's participation and its immaterial. It's a good project, it's good design. Yeah, and we'll see if she can get any bites on it, but...
She's got a lot of wetland there too.
She does have a lot of wetland.
The percentage is probably not worth.
It's, it's a problem.
The actual wetland did not be shown on this.
Yeah, it's bigger than this. It's bigger than, there's more of it over here. Yeah, it is too. And, you know, the national wetlands is roughly, is much smaller than it actually is in the field. And that's, and that's a problem that we, you know, suffered throughout this whole district, guys. There's more wetlands than we think in certain areas. Okay, so we've, so we're done with that. The only other one is A1 over here. And you remember, this is a, this is a situation where, you know, we...
Where's the river?
There is, uh...
But it comes down and it's right down the edge of the...
Yeah, this is the river right here. Walker's Lane is right here. Goes right along the river right now through here. So if you recall, this area here is also part of the DB2 district. And the issue there, of course, is that, you know, we haven't had a consultation with the property owners here, but we pretty much can be assured that they will not like the idea of using Walker's Lane as an access point into that area. I wouldn't, and I'm sure none of us would like it either. Plus, this is not the greatest of all intersections. Site this.
Yeah, but if the state ever straightened the road out, like you was on it.
Well, don't count it.
It'd give you a lot better site.
Cause that would require them also to change the bridge.
So Ted, is that coming in right across from VIP?
Yep.
Okay.
So you've got that large parcel of land there.
They're more on Dan.
You can take it along the edge, or you can take it down the center and split it with a road and put in parcels on either side of it. And subdivide that. And basically, it just does a loop. Does a loop around. We have an access point here, or we have access, yeah, can I have an access point through, you know, it's a little tight through the solar center. But there are several other access points that you could...
Talk about that strip, that piece of property right there next to the Big E.
Big E?
Yeah, that's what it used to be.
That one's Big E as well. The only one I know is in West Springfield. Oh, Big Apple, oh.
No, not Big Apple. It used to be a big, it was long where all...
Oh, the White Office Building, yeah, it's next to that.
That was the Big E.
So where's that come out now, Ted? Is that, you said next to the solar place?
Yeah.
Ted, why wouldn't that, that corridor right there hug that property line? That's immediately to the east of where you have the road.
Um, you could do that. I just kinda threw it out in the middle there to give them more opportunity to do some double loading up, that's why.
Well, I think if you wanna...
These are already, these are already, these are already developed. And that's one of the reasons.
Okay, all right.
If you look at them, now, they're not developed all the way back.
Right.
You know, they're, they're only developed, this is the, this, well, that's solar. Where's the Big E here, Marty? That is the Big E.
That is the big property, the E. But between the solar and the Big E, there is a lot right there.
There's also an access point right here. There's also an access point right here. That actually goes to this property here. This is, um...
I can't think of his name.
Yeah, I can't either. Jeez, it was the first application we...
Dagton?
Um, sorry, Dag, Dagton, yeah. Dagton, thank you goodness. Sorry. Dagton, yeah, that's, that's the woodworking, especially woodworking place right here. Right next to him is a right of way that goes out.
No?
Yeah.
Because you have, you have Strickland, which was, which was where the woodworking shop. There is a road going down there.
Yeah, there, there is an access point right down through there, that you could come across. This, this has more potential for getting such a loop in there. And it would, and it also avoids that problem of having, being a shortcut or a bypass. No real bypass.
But I thought you actually were going farther. But if you were...
No, I'm not going farther.
If you were to go at the back of the property line, would that not, for those front ones, would that not give you the businesses in closer proximity where they can share drives and where they can share the parking out and back? And the attraction of one attracting the other? I mean, that was the concept. I guess I, when we go way out to redevelop some other land out there, our purpose was to try to take those businesses up front and have businesses back to, so that there'd be this synergy between them all. To help, to get back to your point, I, yeah.
I don't know. I'm just, just my... Sure, we could, well, I mean, we can hug this thing if you want to. I just wanted to get more out into this area here, but...
But if you had that road, but if you had that road hugging...
Yep, if I had it hugging like this.
Yeah.
I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have to come in through here.
Then you can still develop all of that, go through here.
Absolutely. This is seeing brown.
That's what I see is, is the development going on and being, taking up that whole parcel instead of splitting it.
Yeah, then it'd probably more, I would say it'd be more valuable if it all intact.
Well, depending on what it is. If they, you know, that's a huge, that's a large amount of land.
It is a huge amount of land, and yet, we're taking a fourth of it for, for the road.
Well, you also might, you might necess, you, if you don't go, if you don't puncture it in some way, you're also going to require him to put in more road. You're gonna have it there anyways. I mean, this is something you can put a very large operation on. Terrific, great.
I know what...
What happens if you don't? What happens if it's small uses?
One thing, I think, I'd rather, I'm thinking what Lodge said, that the synergy... But if you, if you just have large lots that are potentially gonna be used, we're competing with, like Kenny Bunk right off the exit, their industrial park behind the Cummins Market. This open lots there and it's, what better access can you have? So we're gonna be, and then off to beat the track. And I think we have to wonder what type of, how many of those will be, will be developed? It won't be that fast, I guess. It's not gonna happen right away.
It's gonna take thirty years.
I think it's closer.
Oh, yeah.
If it's closer to the back of, of the existing properties, I think it's more likely that for expansion and just the, the access will be, will be there and the visibility.
No, we can hug it because, I mean, actually, we have a lot of land in here. Half of that could be used, half of this could be used. Cause it goes about to the end there.
You got businesses already there, they may see that, there's a good potential and a...
Some of that's their parcel, you know, do, you know, split it right in half and...
And they can stream up.
Those front parks can choose to put a, a driveway from back. But if they're not attached to that road, they, they won't have that option.
What businesses do you have there, Ted?
Oh, you got solar center, you got the Big E. This is solar center, this big wedge right here, Marty? That's solar center here. This is the Big E right here. This is Dagton right there, okay? And then we get into, this is all vacant land out here. It's, it's wetland. This is wetland. But everything down in here is wet.
Is there access to those large properties?
No.
Right now?
No. Well, tell me where.
You have that one?
Right there, that, that one and a one below it.
You have, you have that one?
This one has, this, this one does have access here.
Yeah, but you do have access, cause there is a road.
It's Stephanie Nettles, right there.
Yeah, no, but you do have access there, down there, because, uh, next to, there is a road going down behind the cockerda shop.
Yeah.
Which goes all the way to the, to the river and then...
Yeah, it's right here.
Yeah.
It's a right of way. That's why I put that right there. This is new system right here.
I think Renee, Drew Mills, Drew, Drew. Mrs. Drew owns that.
She owns a lot of it.
Yeah, because it used to own where Branch Brook was.
Yep, same Drew, right. So, that's the same Drew? That's Pamela Drew, is that? Is that Pamela Drew?
Doesn't matter.
I believe it's Rita.
It's Rita, Rita.
It doesn't matter who owns it.
But Pamela is the one that has the lawnmower on.
Okay, so if we, if we hug...
Her daughter.
So, what you're proposing is the, is the, basically, create this horseshoe here coming around the back of these properties. Now, that will work. That will open up that whole area that we weren't sure was even gonna be viable. And it avoids the process of getting into here. Which is why we were, we were teetering on the edge of whether or not we want to do this.
Because Mrs. Drew was with us when we were doing the sidewalk at Solar.
Yeah, she came, Marty.
Yes. She was down there with us at the sidewalk there.
Rita?
Let's look at B.
Okay. B is good, B, B has some real problems. B has, B has a fundamental flaw, too, quite frankly. And that is, uh, B, I talked to John Hughes, and John Hughes loves the idea of coming through here. Thinks it's great, thinks Mrs. Drew's gonna love it. Whether this comes here or here is immaterial. I just kind of drew a big arc through here. Actually, what I was driving at is I was trying to push this road as far to this property line as possible. The reason why is this is him want campground, this whole thing.
Right.
So, what we're doing is violating the security of the campground by putting a road through. That's one of the problems, that's the first fundamental problem.
Well, we don't do it?
Well, then we don't have, then we don't have any road. And if it stops there, we don't have.
Yeah, doesn't happen.
Because I got, the reason, this is, this is, uh, you see this grain here? That's because this is the obstruction of campground, and I got a residence right here. So, um...
Where does the residents have access, how do they?
Way down here, I'll show you, you can see on the aerial here.
Party property.
Um, there it is right here. This is, oh, is that Rodeo Drive?
Yeah, Rodeo Drive.
Supposedly pronounced rodeo, we all call it rodeo. This is Rodeo Drive.
It's way back there.
It goes, that's a long drive there.
That's a huge, it's an immense drive.
Oh, so long.
Uh, I think it's...
Long enough to go a mile.
It's huge. It's a runway. And that, that is the only, that's the real, I mean, look back in here, look at these properties. They're nothing.
So, when you, when you go back, Ted, all the way to, like, you have that drawn, how far away, I know from the campground itself, how far away are you?
From the campground?
Yeah, with the road that you plotted.
For the road I came, I was about two hundred feet.
And that's the campground property, that's probably...
That's campground property.
Right, so the nearest, the nearest campground, the nearest site is probably another, because it doesn't go all the way back to the back of this property, the campground, does it?
No, 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 his campground, you can see here, the campground, it looks like he's got RV sites here, and I haven't been in the back, so I don't know. It looks like it might be tent sites back here.
So, you got a huge, huge buffer.
When he put the second expansion on,
Yeah.
Okay, there was, I think it was eighteen campsites. Okay, and there wasn't necessarily a tent there. But I don't remember how far it was extending away from the property line. I mean, uh, because I think, wasn't that only twenty-seven acres? That and...
I don't remember.
Twenty-seven acres, I'm going by, because that's also was Mr. Jarvis's property, which was part of the family property right there.
Maybe we, we don't have to have it continuous all the way. Maybe just a few loops would be, would give access to the back property.
Okay.
There's that, and that's one solution would be to basically come in through Branch Brook and come out through Jures. The other one would be to talk to them about it. Because, quite frankly, they're on an island. If you look, if you look at the... The campground, yeah. They've got, they've got, the reason why they are where they are is because they've got two major streams that are confining them in.
Yeah.
Can they go crossed over here? Yeah. They own this land in here, and they own the land up in here. They got this big, it's not a big swamp, but it's a, um, they've got a green swamp right here. And they've got this in here, and it actually looks like it's all deciduous forest.
But, you know, the nature of their business is to be in the woods.
Right.
But Tom, you're still quite away from that, though.
Well, and, and I'm, you know, looking at this area forty years from now, and if it, if it truly develops into the DB2 area, the campground will morph into something else.
I'm just thinking of, to put it to town vote.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm saying, a road right there in 2015?
Yeah.
Crazy.
Yeah.
But in 2055?
Yeah.
And that's where my take on all of, I mean, maybe not as much on that A1 that we just talked about, but this one coming through B would be a a preferred location for the town to work jointly with any incoming business to try and develop a corridor in through there. Not necessarily for the town to, you know, put the bill on some big, you know, road that, who knows what kind of development or potential will ever come out of it.
Yeah.
But to say, look, if we're gonna get some development back up in here, we want to ensure we've got some interconnectivity and also access into these back parcels that are, that are pretty much landlocked right now.
Well, I, I, I agree, but I want to make sure that we're serving the front businesses as well.
Front needs as well.
Well, that's what we have to talk about, that's why we discuss things. So, I think we need to sit down and say, is this something that you'd be totally opposed to? Because it's ruining your business plan? You see some opportunities that you could take advantage of?
Branch Brook, he said it did be glad to see it.
Oh, yeah, my Branch Brook, absolutely, yeah, we're all for it.
And he's, and he basically said he thinks that Rita Drew would go for it, too.
Garnett is, uh, is the landowner there on that site, not Drew.
But with the campground, if you've got like three hundred feet, four hundred feet of buffer, that might be plenty for that, I mean, it's all woods there.
Yeah. Well, that's something to talk... I'm a hundred feet from mine from that residence, and that's, would that burn and all that? Yeah, that's a lot, that's a long distance, I mean, it's, you know. I don't think the business is gonna affect the campground.
Yeah, I don't think so either, no, with that far away.
Question on your white map.
Yes.
Okay. Now, can you show me where town property is?
Town property?
The one where we were looking at town hall, where that, I think where that B was.
Yeah, it's right here.
I can't see, where is it? Where does it come off Route 1?
Isn't that one of the access roads to town?
Yeah, it's, this is, this is the road that goes out right here. That's the access, this is, this is the carpet, um, this is the carpet, uh, it's not carpeted now, but we all think it was the carpet building, the carpet sort, was Ben's carpet.
What I'm talking about next, Commandant's.
Yeah, this, this one right here, this is, this is our access point here.
Where is it on the map, on the white line?
There's an access point right here. This is actually a CMP easement as well. And then this is, this is an access point.
On the white map?
Yeah.
I can't see it on the green map. Can you show us on the white map?
Right here.
See a dotted line, right?
Where the dotted line is.
Now, that is Commandant's, or is that the carpet?
Commandant's is...
Commandant's to the south.
Commandant's is on the south, and the carpet's on the, on the north.
So, coming this way, coming this way. What do you want to come in? Make a loop?
Yeah, but if we... Where's the back, where's the back edge of, of DB1?
DB1's back edge is right here.
That's DB2?
Yeah, DB2. DB1 is right here.
Yeah, like two hundred fifty-eight.
It's only three hundred fifty-eight. It comes out a little bit more through here.
You have the road closer to that, to the boundary.
Where's the other one come out?
Well, you can have it closer to the boundary than you do this kind of thing. But at the same time, you're not gonna, you're not gonna necessarily want to put the road right up against the boundary of the DB1.
Why? What would be the drawback?
Well, looking at this one, if your road is right, you know, let's say, let's say even if we pushed it in this way, the reason I didn't is because this is a pretty lousy area in here. But let's say we did push it in this way. But you would still want to double load that road. There's no reason to double load it when it's rammed up against existing buildings here. Besides, some of these guys may want to join up with this guy here and expand out this way. Hey, can I buy some land from you? I don't want to ram them in with a road behind them. I want, I want, I want a business on this side, which they have connectivity between that business, and the road's providing the frontage for this business.
But that, that road is always providing something to the back side.
Doing nothing for, for DB1.
It doesn't need to do anything for DB1. DB1's already got frontage there. They've already got their frontage on the road. Their focus is on the, on Route 1. They're not looking forward, they're not looking in the back.
With the ones in the back, I, I, I thought the concept was we were gonna have the ones up front, close to the road,
Yeah.
behind them,
Right.
with connectivity from the back of their building with parking lots or road or whatever, you would go to the next, which would be the DB2, so what, you're losing. I'm sorry, I'm just confused.
And again, that's where, what's the, what's the major constraint you were talking about that's right where the B, B1 no kids?
I've got some, I got, I got a huge wetland. I've got a ditch. I basically have a wetland there.
Yeah, wetland stream.
Doesn't show, but I got one.
Well, you see the stream coming through?
See the stream, yeah. If you look at the topo, if you come up and look at the topo, you see I've got a, I've got a square. And if you've been out there, I mean, that's kind of what, that, that site right there is pretty much what killed the town hall.
No, yeah, yeah.
It's because of that condition. Now, the town hall is a small building.
The biggest thing that killed the town hall is...
Versus something big.
Killed the town hall, Ted, was the ditch that's along the side when you first enter.
Oh, right here?
No, right there. Because where the town hall was, it's pretty flat.
Yeah.
It's all pretty flat there, it's the ditch to try to fill that in with the access road.
That's right here. That's right there. If you look at the topo, you see that this ditch is right, remember the ditch that's back over here a little bit north of the town hall site? That's, that's why I didn't swing it up right there, swung it out this way. But I could swing it along this property line. I'm still gonna have to cross this, but I wanted to cross this where I don't have a deep ravine.
And that's where I'm wondering, well, I guess you cut in front of the campground, though, if you came along that property line, right where the B1 label is.
I'm going through the campground.
Right.
And I don't want to go through... I can move this sucker. I mean, if they say, look, we don't want to expand beyond, I can go through this choke point. Right there, I can move this to this choke point here. But then, this, if he wants to do an expansion here, I'm taking that away.
Of course, um, I still wonder what the purpose of that back road will do. You could almost, if, if you didn't have, um, from that cul-de-sac up there all the way down to Branch Brook, if we didn't have that, you could still almost, if you have those two roads coming in from Route 1 that you have, the dash and the straight.
One or the other, I would say.
If you, if you had both of them, you'd almost given access to all the properties there. And maybe that's good enough, just to have a couple of, of main access roads from Route 1.
And that's my, that might be how it works, Tom. It might be that, that we do a couple of loops like we're doing with A1. Instead of having a uniform road that goes all the way through.
Yeah, B1 is causing that, then it might be a circle.
I don't know if we'll be able to get the perfect road and all the way across. Maybe just a couple of loops in there.
Where's Old Post Road?
This is Old Post.
Okay.
These are the residences along here. The problem, the only, the longest one is right here. That being, uh, uh, Rodeo Drive. And then, then, I mean, if you look at this, Joe...
Come on, Rodeo Drive is way down near Center Road, isn't it?
No, it's right near.
No, come on, just...
This is it right here, at the intersection where Old Post.
And the question, Kyle, can you assist?
Right.
Yeah, it's the corner of the Center Road.
Yeah, that's where it starts to be the Center.
Yeah, it's the Center Road, and it's, it's, uh, three properties down the road.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, that's a ways down. I mean, that's a ways down in comparison to...
Oh, right about, where is we pointing?
And then, but look at these lands right here. Look at all these things right here. Now, I got some, look at that, that, I can, I can see that stream right there.
But that's, that's not, that's not the DB2 district we're talking about, though.
Yeah.
DB2 district goes like this.
Yeah, on the, on the west side of that. But coming from the east, we're not even considering that now, you know.
Maybe we should. This is all great subdivision land for single-family homes.
Well, is that what we're trying to have, single-family development?
So, single-family on one side and business on the other.
That's what we're probably end up doing, it makes sense, but, but I, I thought we wanted business development that was the whole...
Yeah, we do, no, I, I, I was saying, when you look at this, we maybe want to drop this down a little bit, make this more of a DB2. Why drop it down even more? Because if you look at this, I mean, look at the amount of land that's open. It's huge. And it's got constraints, there's no question, it does have constraints.
That's, that's almost in a different direction than we've been spending the last year on, I think.
Yeah, but at least that's on Cave on Power Light. They won't have to play with CMP.
With the, um...
Maybe might, they might even get prepaid for one of the rest of Route 1, does.
I think we've been talking more about business district, not trying to develop more residences.
No, I'm not trying to drive, I'm, I'm saying, I'm trying to, I'm actually thinking of dropping the DB2 district closer to Old Post Road to take advantage of some of the existing open ground that's there.
I'd, I'd say we...
It's, it's more. I'm sure it's better.
I'd say we, we try...
I haven't been through all this, to be honest with you. It looks pretty flat, I mean, the area, you know, it's actually relative to flat back.
So, what's that, anyway, right where you were pointing, right, it's darker, is that?
Yeah, that's a shit, that's a cloud.
I think before what we...
I thought it was Wells, and I thought it was a killer right there, and as soon as I saw that, then I went out in a sight and then section.
I think we should find out what some of the landowners are thinking.
Well, of course, we're gonna have to do that, but before we go to the landowners, we want to also have an idea of what we want to ask them. You know? You don't want to say, hey, what do you think about putting a road in the back of your house? You know, I pretty much can guarantee you what the answer is going to be. You want to have, have an idea that's defendable, defensible, when you present it to them, saying, here's what we're thinking, here's possibly some of the advantage or disadvantages to you, what do you think?[1626.81] We want to be able to have them react to something and not just, you know, give it a thought. So, that's why we're arguing, that's why we're having this debate right now, and I'm actually getting some good, I think we're getting some good feedback on this. You're telling me, pull this sucker over here, I got a gap point right here. Maybe I just have to do this kind of thing and then pull this up. What Tom's saying is, you're wasting all this land, or Bob's also saying, you're wasting all this area through here, pull this around. Once we get past, I mean, this is the real problem area, this is the thorn in the side right now. And if this didn't have a house on it, we could have just skipped it completely by dipping down into here.
But that whole road is almost servicing the campground. If you look at a loop from Route 1, see where you had B1 written?
Yep.
Just inside that, that being horseshoe, and maybe that one of them goes up further, a little bit north or whatever. But put in one of those, you know, forget the lower line, but just the horseshoe.
Horseshoe, cul-de-sacs on both sides, basically.
Yeah, I figure.
You know?
That could work.
And that opens up, and I don't know who said it, but it looks like it opens up at least access to almost all of the land around there. To the exception of, well, even the northern part of the campground, it looks like, we're to do that, and forget that whole bottom line.
So, you're saying, Bob, come in where the town property is and make a cul-de-sac where B is, and then you go back up, make a cul-de-sac where the cul-de-sac is up there now. So, you got a.
Well, I don't know that we call it a cul-de-sac, I think it's just enacted, I think it's just an access, you know, do that.
Yeah, but if you extended it, put a cul-de-sac at the extension, you'd get even more.
Even more, right.
There's here.
But at a cost, though, why go let the property?
The property owner, see, once you have that potential, I agree, that's the property owner. And if they, because cul-de-sacs and the rest of that, the T, that's all allowed in our order, they can develop it any way they want. We haven't cut that much of their property, you know, for the road, the 16 feet problem.
The town would make the investment of making it accessible, we're doing them quite a service, providing them a lot of value, and then they can take the access and then create their own roads.
Yeah.
Instead of us saying, "This is where your road's gonna be," they can argue the road.
I think I go back to what John said at the last meeting, if you make the building easier for the people that want to come in, they're gonna come in, it's gonna take time, it's gonna take 20 years or 10 years, but you're gonna get people, and just now you look at Route 1, and what's happened out there in the last year, you know, like I said about Craig's Place Champagne, and then you look at Chad's place, and Mario's beaten his place up, we've beaten that place up, and that is contagious.
I think this ongoing discussion has done helpful, it may be taking us forever, but I think keeping it out in front, where we want to go and that we want to improve, I think it's all been beneficial.
Ted, where does it come out, the road above the town property?
Or this road?
Yeah, where does that come out?
Up?
The connector to Route 1.
Solid road, what about, that goes out right by the carpet store.
How you got access to that?
There's a right of ways for that.
Is that where, on the other side of the carpet store? On the other side, because before.
The south side of the carpet store.
Okay, because that was all part of Bergeron. Because that was the access into it, which was Bergeron's park.
It's an access point, that's one access point right now.
That's where the fire hydrant is.
I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm looking at right of ways that I have, existing on.
Is there any ability to come, if we were to do that loop, come in at B1 Town Hall Site, coming along that property line? Where you said the bad spot.
Right through here, you mean, come along that.
And then, is there any ability to come down, say, between Weers and Rumble Ford?
That's probably not.
Not really, no, not really.
No.
It's, I was, you could.
So, there is.
But it gets really, it gets really hard, Jamie, it gets, it's a good idea, you know, it kind of works, but we've got a stream, fairly good-sized stream that separates them, and that's why we have that separate, that green space between. And frankly, this area back in here where, I mean, this is Weers right now, that, if you remember, that's kind of a, it shows a wet area, but it's much bigger, this wetland is actually right there.
Okay, Bentley, doesn't that border you?
This is definitely over here.
Behind the.
Behind the Rumble.
Yeah.
The Rumble Ford.
Right here at the corner, that's, this is the corner of his campground right here.
You just tie into Bentley's campground.
Well, you know, it's a problem with both, you know, first, you know, we don't, you know, I don't want to have, I'll tell you, I don't want to have too many shortcuts. I can take that shortcut, I don't want this shortcut. Just don't think that's a good.
You're not building it, get that, a loop. It's not going out of your pocket, but a loop, T loops.
Trying to do some planning here.
Yeah, loops, double load.
No, we can do loops, because that prevents the idea of having.
Shortcuts.
Shortcuts, which is not what we're trying to achieve.
Yeah, but Route 1 isn't all, doesn't bode to shortcuts and that.
What's that?
It doesn't bode to shortcuts and that, it's not like it's stop and go traffic in there.
Oh, yeah, right, yeah, I would do. Well, you have stop and go traffic behind Stop and Shop.
We're assuming, the point is, Dan, that we hope to be incredibly successful, and we will have stop and go traffic.
Okay, put your white sheet out again.
Yes, I'm sorry, you know what we need?
Two eases.
We need two eases, so we can do side-by-side comparison. I'm amazed you guys can even figure out what's going on at that distance.
Use a chair, use a, like a chair.
You know, you aren't giving us that credit.
Well, I can't, as soon as I'm standing next to it.
Well, put it on a chair. You got a chair right there, put it against the wall.
Now, the meeting's almost over, you picked up.
Yeah. At least somebody thought of it, huh?
Okay, so does that be like, Doc, Ted, your campground, is that, where does yours start?
Yeah, that cul-de-sac.
Yeah, that cul-de-sac.
That cul-de-sac stops right.
At Bentley?
Basically, no, it stops right at Weers. This land back here, right here, this is part of Weers.
Where's the tower?
Right, right, I called the site.
Right there at the cul-de-sac.
Well, who owns that large piece just north of the cul-de-sac?
Actually, it's, this is Bentley's campground.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
And the tower's right here.
Yeah, that's what he said.
Tower's right there.
Bentley, would you like to have access and back to your campground, or would that?
Yeah, right through here, yeah, I want to go through this stream, too.
Would that benefit your business?
It depends on the zoning issue, so I can have the rest of the campground. And or I went, then I could sell it for industrial land. You know, probably he'll be doing industrial instead of doing campground.
Yeah.
Plan A, Plan B.
Yeah, I'm just looking at where we can come out, we can't, it would have to be a spur unless we came out. We're not coming out of there, we're not coming out there. See, the problem is that we're considering this residential, this is gonna stay residential all through the year. And we ended it, we ended the district right here, so the district went like this, and this is all residential, and I've got, I don't know whose house that is. Long driveway. But I got residences here. Who's, do you know who this is right here, Bentley? He's got a nice chunk of land.
Oh, no, I don't know, I know where it is, it's way in, it's that long road behind the little guy, Keith's house trailer. Getting up close to Old Post.
Old Post, is it, which side?
It's on.
Towards the block cabin side?
It's on the side of the block cabin.
Well, if you came up Old Post and turned right to go towards the Rumble Market, you'd be right in that pond, but way back in, way in, a long, long road. Long driveway.
You'd be better off with the cul-de-sacs.
That's not where Tommy's driving down to there.
But that's business.
That farther down, then you got Drew, then you got.
Well, if we definitely want to extend it into his property, we can do that, but I don't want to go through the road, I still don't want to go through the road.
But I think the idea of a couple of loops in there.
Well, there's about a loop here, I mean, you can start off with a loop here with spurs, you know, basically. Something, actually bring it up like this, and then spur like this going as far as we want there, and then, and the line, since the line goes something like this.
Cul-de-sac can be bigger, smaller, whatever.
But also, too, just like what Bentley said, okay, along the way, that if it was down that way, it may be, like you would say, for the future, depending on the zoning, okay, that would it be feasible for camp down? Would it be turned on and access for industrial?
Do whatever you want to do with that business line, I mean, it's, it's, remember, I mean, the largest use in there is a hundred thousand square foot building. I mean, that's a good.
But that would also give you an access.
You should have seen the Conferences Plan Committee, when they saw that, created that one.
You also have to understand, this is a concept, it was conceptual, but still, you know, property owners, the people that look at, so just throwing out ideas here.
And what they put in there, I mean, you could put in campground, you could put industrial, or, you know, a business, whichever one you think fits better. That is a really Wild West district we create.
Yeah, right.
We really have, and there's a lot of, yeah, you've got some design standards, and you're close to the residence, and you're close to the B1 district or otherwise, or BD1. And otherwise, I mean, there's a lot of possibility in there, and, you know, quite frankly, gentlemen, if we extend sewer up Route 1, which is going to probably end up being one of the recommendations we were making in the Economic Development Committee, and it's gonna open this place up. We make it a lot more of a viable, a viable development.
How much we can do it, how much we can afford, until we can businesses in there.
We're working.
Back to John's thing, once we make it easier to get the businesses, then we can afford, you pay so much per foot for the running fees in front of the property.
Well, we've got plans for this, we're working on something, so.
What you're getting at from just extending Branch Brook and, you know, going straight, continuing on, and either coming, heading down a little bit, just make like a dead end or a cul-de-sac type thing.
Come over and draw. Much easier for you to take the pencil that it is to make, try to figure out what you're saying.
So, here, coming in here, instead of doing this, you know, coming out this way, or looping, I'm not sure if this is all taking.
This is a grand place. That's the Rumble Playhouse.
Right. So, what's this here for?
That's a good question, but that's part of the problem.
I know what that is, that's where, no, that's where she has her septic, because she bought that property there for septic. For future septic designs and everything else.
So, Branch Brook stops where, right now?
250 feet from Old Post Road.
It does be a lot quicker in mind.
Yeah, right.
According to this, they own all the way to this property line right here.
Watch wide, you can't see it through your head.
So, where does the road go today? Does the road go all the way up to here today, you know, the road stops like.
Still, right, right, either. No, they want to develop this portion right here, you know, they've always looked at it as residential, and said, you're gonna have a business with residential, the rare. Doesn't work very well. Then you drive through the business zone to get to your house, it's not marketable, which is why they haven't done it. And that would be the same with anybody through here. Because the problem is, they've got these long lots, and that's why we're doing this, we've got long lots in which essentially, the front part is business and the back part is residential. And the residential is in the density, it just doesn't, just doesn't make sense to have to go through the business area to get to your house. It's just not as marketable.
So, again, the question, why would we have a road that far back to serve residential development back there?
I'm not trying to, I was trying to get it right down through here, certainly could make the turn through here, I, I can't go through here.
You realize that's a tough spot, right, crossing that.
I can cross here, I could put this here, I could, I certainly could make this turn here and put it across here, and there's not, no reason with the road.
Why go a little turn, just go to a. Yeah, what are we gaining?
What are we gaining by putting that whole section in?
Yeah.
Connectivity!
Connectivity for what?
So, what, though, I mean, the connectivity was from the businesses in front, and the business.
Just like that, let's say, Hamlock says, "No, hell, I can put a little area in here."
Let him come up with that idea, if we've extended it to the end and we stop before we make a left-hand turn, it's probably heading back northeast. Then for property owners to make the decision if they want to put a road through there.
This is theoretical.
Yeah.
What we're trying to do is, we're trying to give. I guess I'm saying that if that's the case, then we shouldn't have a road in this area at all, is what you're telling me.
No, you want to plant a seed, right.
That's exactly why I want to do this.
Yeah. That's what this is.
We want to see, no, I'm not making anybody, we're not making anybody do this at this point. What we're trying to do is get people to think beyond what they're used to right now, because they're used to, hey, Route 1 isn't filled up, nothing's happening, you know, and I got all this land back there, I can't afford to pull a road in all the way from Old Post Road, and it's all residential, and there's no demand for residential, we're saying, hey, here's an idea. Your property does have value, we've just rezoned a good portion of it to be business, and if we start planting that seed, as you said, to get that idea that there is viable, there's viable land to build back here. And there is a way of creating connectivity that makes it more attractive, without having to assemble all the parcels. I mean, the other thing is, if a developer were to look at this and say, the only way I can make this work is if I assemble all these 50, 60 acre parcels, it's gonna cost me a fortune to do that. Why would I do that, it's just, yeah, it's not, I'm not gonna do that, it's too hard, too expensive, you know? Too much time, too much absorption rate I gotta deal with. You say, hey, but we're gonna try to get you guys all to work together, and you have a common road going through there, line up, and, I said, well, maybe that'll make sense.
I will tell you, though, that road at B1, that would be a very expensive road.
Yeah, it would be.
Very expensive road.
Oh, yeah.
Just that one section right there.
But it's gonna be, look at it this way, think of the cost of putting a driveway for each one of these properties. That'll be effectively roads.
Right.
If somebody's gonna do an industrial or a business, a business subdivision back here, they're gonna go the road. Wouldn't it be a lot easier, instead of having to build a road in every single one of these cases from Route 1, to have something back here? Share accesses.
Right, I'm just saying, I'm just, the fact that it's gonna be a very expensive road might be a deterrent for somebody to even consider that.
Yep, yep, absolutely true.
Okay, one thing is, where you have that there, what is the depth that are you running off of Route 1? Just for an example of questions.
Oh, I don't know.
Bentley, how far do you go back into your property down there at the cul-de-sac? Do you have any idea?
It's right here.
A quarter thousand?
Yeah.
It's about.
Quarter. Are you going 1,500 feet?
Yep. That's a long way.
No, because you got more than 1,500 feet there. The original zoning was 1,000 feet, because when you're turning, right down there where Branch Brook was right through there, from Old Post Road to that lot, you got 250 feet. Because the end of that lot there was almost 1,500 feet coming off of Branch Brook, property itself.
This is Old Post Road, you're saying this is 1,500 feet?
No, it's more than that.
He's trying to go by yours, I think.
To back of Branch Brook.
Property line. If the line to, then the Branch Brook, where the road exists is 250, to the back end of the red one is placed at, it's 500 feet.
We're about half a mile from Old Post to Route 1, can't my house.
Yeah, you walk it all the time.
It's a mile, it's a mile, if I do a little, you know, if I don't go the long way, you might campground back to block cabin, it's a mile.
So, the consensus is, let's look at a loop here instead. This would be dashed.
And or that could be the loop, you know, where the B1 is, right there, the first one in B1, that one's really expensive, I agree with him. And maybe the loop is coming out the other, I was just saying, conceptually, kind of like we did with the A, little loops coming in hitting these major projects seems to open everything up, we were thinking a straight line, I used that B1 as it exists, but doing the bigger loop.
So, not this one, but this one?
But that one, and the extension up to Bentley, if it gives them an option to.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, this is a seed, it's the goal to, that's it, and it's a seed. If they see that this could be done, we can maybe even establish some rights away or some things, so people know that it can happen. You know, you don't have to purchase lots of stuff.
The object's to get the property owners excited, and that's interesting.
I still, I'll say it one more time, I still think closer to Route 1 is better, it's a cheaper road to build, it gives just as much access, it provides a benefit to the businesses already there. So, are you saying go like this? No, forget about going through Hamlock, that's probably not worth it.
Wait a minute, you're giving me, you're giving me a goal, you're giving me a pointy message here, guys.
This, the only advantage this has is getting access to this property, other than that, if the stuff right here, it opens up this one, this one, this one, this one, all these are all opened up by going only that far. This is another thing, maybe you can have one spur going that far, if you want to, but this is outside the DV2 district anyway, so.
It's in the DV2 district.
Well, not back.
The DV2 district.
Okay, so we can have one spur, I would rather.
It's also in the flat area, too.
I would rather see something that was closer, I'm thinking, I was thinking like right here.
Yeah, but look at your depth, you're 1,000 feet, what you have.
And you have all this empty area. Because when I'm not writing, Kenny Buck, I don't want to go to the postal office, I can just go right around them there. Then I can go over the other side, shop this village, if.
You don't need a road to do that.
There is no road over in Saco, is there? It's all driveway, it's all parking lots.
I thought that's what we were talking about.
We are, so I don't know why we would need a road directly behind the DV1. Right now, if I'm at this business, and I want to go here, I have to come out Route 1, to get from here to there, to there. So, I thought, I was sharing all along through this whole process, that we wanted to have, prevent less in and out of Route 1. And then we also wanted, the second thing is to provide access. And then we also wanted, the second thing is to provide access. Now, I think what we're doing is only providing access back here, where we only need to go this far, we still provide the same access. I just see this being a big expense, and it's not benefiting the existing businesses. There, there might be some great business move back here, but right now, this is where the action is, this is where the current businesses are, probably more likely to build all here, but if we have access, we still provide something back there as well. So that's, that's what I, I think, maybe an H, you know, like right there, and this continued further, provide something there and another, you know, just, but this, this is gonna be an issue, we, maybe we have to just drop this.
Or maybe we should talk to them.
Talk to them, if, if they're up front, but who's gonna build that? It's just like a, a mile long road.
We know the town here.
Well, is, is Hamlock, Hamlock Campground gonna pay for that along their property? Why would they, what would they get out of it?
Yeah.
Right.
It'd be negative for them, 'cause they're losing property, they lose the, what they would, they would cost.
Ten million bucks or something, just to put that road for, for what? They're getting nothing out of it. So the town would have to probably pay for that if they wanted. But I'd say, forget about going across Hamlock, that's a challenge no matter what, and there's not too much advantage to, to doing it.
I think maybe we should just keep it as an option.
Well, keep it as an option, yeah, yeah. Nothing wrong with that. If he, if, if the owners wanna make it work and we let them pay for it, I don't think the town wants to pay for that, if the vote is certain of an approval.
Well, you certainly, when, when you, when you, if you pass the, the ordinance passes, you certainly give Branch Brook the opportunity to expand business.
Sure.
So, that in itself might spur even more in down the bottom.
But that's allowed already, they can put the road, Branch Brook can expand their road already.
No, they, they, they're up against businesses, I mean, residential.
Property.
That's 'cause of the zone, right?
Right, exactly.
The zone.
So when you, so when you change the zone, now it becomes business.
To expand to that, on their own.
I'm all for it, making it allowed, right?
That's what we're trying to do.
But, but that might, that might add, you know, you get your little, but that might add a little spur there.
We wanna allow, we wanna get access.
And we wanna let them know we'll work with them.
Right.
To make it happen, if it's a good idea, doesn't matter whether it is.
Okay, we got a consensus on two things, so we move on to the planning business. One is, we wanna put a, a yellow dotted line, uh, through, through, uh, the campground.
Right.
Everybody have a consensus on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Pull the road closer to the VI district, or B1 district.
If possible.
If possible.
Of course it's possible. And put a couple more spurs on it, instead of making it a through road, and just worry about doing loops instead of.
Yeah, I wonder if I could do that.
I just know that first line of B1, the dash line there, that, that would be, that would pretty stop somebody from thinking it, so that's one, maybe there's another access out there somewhere in the vicinity, 'cause that's a hard one, and like you said, it needed a, an H connection.
Like Tom said, if we eliminate it altogether.
Huh? Yeah. Well, you know, you know, the other thing too, with, with that B1, right? I mean, the, Clamondin's property, his road is actually, part of his road is actually on the town's own property.
Right.
So, if that was to be shifted over onto his road, and when we talked to him about the town property, he was, he seemed to be okay somewhat with, so maybe if you shifted the road over, and with the town, we were thinking of going and then, you know, going around, but if you keep going straight, you work out some deal with him, and parking, that might be a viable road to do.
I'll play with it some more, okay? I'll play with it at this scale, on, on this kind of map, and, uh, and give you a couple more alternatives that, that achieve more of what you're, of getting that closer to the property line on the, of the existing properties. So that's the BI line, no, it is a BI line, but it's the properties. So, I'll see if I can get it closer. But I, I might not necessarily put it right up against it, because quite frankly, some of them are pretty damn close to that line on the first ones. So, well, all right, I'll play with it.
Are you guys ready to move on to planning business?
Yes.
That's gone.
Okay.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, for meeting.
Any plans to report?
Uh, yeah, let's see, we are gonna be having, uh, let's see what I got. The, uh, we have a, a number of things we're gonna be doing in the, uh, in the upcoming weeks. We have, uh, the, boy, I don't know why I'm having, I'm, I'm mind blocked right now, but, uh, the comprehensive planning committee met on Tuesday, that's the one I wanted to talk about, and the council, comprehensive planning committee has actually been making some pretty good strides. Uh, they've got a lot of the business stuff done, um, not all of it, but we still have two more districts to work on. They're getting the language work together on that. They are not in conflict with what the planning board is proposing. The, uh, the subject that became interesting is one that we haven't dealt with in a while, and we haven't dealt with yet, and that was the Route 111 corridor, and that, they, they wanted to deal with that one. The issue was whether they were thinking that we should have the same kind of standards we have in DB1 on the Route 111 corridor, and I think it became quite apparent that, although we looked at that scale, um, that we weren't gonna create a, a kind of downtown image there, that, that wasn't going necessarily appropriate, and that there should be actually more opportunities given the, given the, uh, the type of land that's there, and the type of business that we're talking about. Route 1 is a slower paced tourist, more, more of a, a local and tourist and, um, I would say a mixed, kind of mixed use corridor from the, from a, uh, transportation user's perspective. Route 111 is quite the opposite, Route 111 is a commuter corridor, and it's a fast-paced, it's, it is, it truly is an arterial, one is an arterial, but it's got a different, different group of people going on it. On Route 1, the objective is to get through fast, and so the, the argument, the, the question everybody was having was, what are we gonna do about, it's not gonna be necessarily a big retail place, because obviously people are, are dead set on getting from point A to point B, and, um, so they were grappling with some of the questions of what kind of uses are gonna be appropriate in that particular area. Um, they have also, uh, decided to, uh, extend the district down to the power line, they're gonna recommend that that district be extended to the power line. And the issue has come up, quite frankly, right, the issue has come up whether or not it should be extended further than the power line. There is no consensus on that, but what.
It's just a discussion. I see you're all high.
We had this, we had this discussion three years ago.
Okay, so that means we can't discuss it again?
No, no, I'm just saying, we had the discussion about moving to the power lines, we moved it to where it is today.
And, and now we're going to the power lines? Um, just a.
You males, bro.
Yeah, all the way to the end.
Well, there was, that, that was proposed, the, the issue really is gonna be, it's really gonna boil down to the heart, the, the, the essential question that, um, I think really drove the, the planning, uh, the, the comprehensive plan last time, and I wasn't here just to witness it, but it's an essential issue of what is Route 111 corridor, and what should that be used for? It's not just an arterial corridor, it is also, is it viewed as being an important scenic and cultural corridor for the town? Because it, uh, the inference is, given all the surveys we've had, both at the comprehensive planning level and the economic development committee level, when that survey was done recently, this past spring, there's still a very strong feeling of the town that the image of Rundle is defined by its open space and agricultural lands. Question is, where are those? Nobody's ever gotten specific, there's been assumptions.
You're off a limerick road.
Well, the question is, yes, what, where are your sacred places? If those are sacred, where are they?
Yeah.
Let's identify, 'cause everybody's making assumptions. Is it off Thompson? Is it Route 111? Is it Hill Road? You know, where are the important areas, if, if it's so important, let's identify them, because then, only then can you make any planning decisions, because there's one side that's saying, Route 111 is naturally a corridor, a commercial corridor, and why are we preventing it from being that? And on the flip side, it's saying, well, it really isn't gonna be an effective commercial corridor 'cause of speed in that particular area.
Yeah, but you're gonna have new road rules there.
And, and the, and the issue is, is there other values that are out there that the town will only preserve? And that's what the, that's what the comprehensive planning committee's gotta do. They've gotta, they've got to discern which, which of those values is, is the primary value. Or if both can, can exist, I mean, the other, the other question is, can you have both in the same district? Can you make it so both can coexist? You can have commercial expansion while at the same time preserve a certain character.
And a lot, yeah, and a lot.
I mean, you've already done that with Kate's, you've already done that with Kate's, so that's not impossible, that's, they, they don't have to be necessarily in competition with each other, it can be complementary.
Yeah, we have businesses and houses, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
Again, it gets back to what is rural character, right?
That's a question that we're getting to find.
But you know, after, after all that Kate went through, I think, I, I'd like to build upon what, what he's questioned there, and just, I, I, I hate to see him finally open up, and then we allow, you know, take, oh, sorry, thanks for doing what you did, but, but now we're gonna let anything go next door to you. So I, I think we'd rather, I think that's.
Side story then. As he was saying.
You already did it, you already did it.
But there are some on the comprehensive committee that feel that Route 111 corridor is a, an opportunity that we're not taking hands off.
Yeah.
For, for our tax base.
Yeah.
And some that say, and I'm, I'm throwing both sides, some that say, look, you know, that's our rural park, we need to protect the residences that are there, and so, I mean.
Most of the residences there are so big, except for.
Well, that's not what it is.
Most of them are big enough.
Big pieces of property.
But the property.
They can have a beautiful farm with some businesses down the street, across the street.
Well, if your, if your businesses, if your businesses are like focal point gardens.
Yeah.
Yeah. Very attractive, it's not a VIP, you, you come into Rundle on Route 1 from the south, you got this big grid VIP sign, you come into Rundle on 111, you got focal point gardens, you got some nice open space, you don't see businesses until after you get past, uh, the gas station.
Well, I actually was just gonna give you guys a report.
But most of those, most of the big property owners, they're, they're gonna price dang, you know, and now we've got the corner, with that, the corner, the corner with, uh, the historical society, I, I mean.
You can plant anything you want, it's not gonna change.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter.
Yeah, that's, that was my point, that, that, that's pretty fixed. I mean, I, I totally disagree with you on that, Jim. I mean, maybe in your property, but somebody with the right amount, if that was zoned differently, somebody with the right amount of money?
No. I'll tell you what, you take Ben's property, you think somebody is gonna buy that and cut up into pieces, it's gonna be another piece with a lot of dollars to buy that.
Probably not, Ben, but people die and pass away, and I mean, I'm not talking about tomorrow, but, you know.
Yeah, I have three kids, one could be up.
I mean, I, again, one of the comments that I see at the comprehensive.
It is a conversation to be had.
I, I used to go and, and play golf, and we're Home Depot.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Okay, and I remember talking to that landowner many times, and he said, you know, I, I wanna sell this, but this is a lousy piece of property, ain't no way I'm never gonna sell this piece of property. And I knew the guy across the street, I was good friends with the guy across the street, Tom Zotto, said the same thing, you know, I'm gonna hold off, I'm gonna hold off, I don't think I'll ever settle. Those guys made lots of money, somebody came in and bought all that property, but what they did, you didn't, you never would've thought that Home Depot would come in there and drill all that frickin' ledge, somebody did.
Yeah.
Well, you talk about over, across the road from there, at, where the Target and Market Basket, I mean, that was a, a core piece of land that was purchased, a fifty, sixty acre piece with a whole lot of smaller parcels up in the front of it, that were accumulated into the one big development.
And one holdout. And that was a suit up there on the top for sale now.
Wish me soul. Okay, so, didn't that, didn't that property sell eventually?
No.
Still have it.
So we're gonna have to have a meeting, they wanna have a meeting with us, enjoy it, we'll discuss this.
Yeah, we'd like you guys to think of one Route 111 corridor and get your thoughts, 'cause we're struggling with what to do with it, and.
I was closing doors the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, well, I think they were trying, trying to plan a joint, I think we're gonna have one more meeting, and then we're gonna try to do a joint.
So the joint meeting isn't the twenty-fourth, I didn't make my notes with me, so, I got the minutes, yeah. Yeah, we got a lot of stuff on the twenty-fourth, though.
Where we at?
Sidewalk, public, public right here.
You boys for here.
You boys.
Boy, ain't capable.
Now, can I? You're supposed to run right through those.
What else you got?
Twenty, the twenty, twenty-ninth is when we're having our next meeting, it's on a Tuesday.
So it's gonna be in November.
And then we're gonna have a joint meeting after.
The twenty-ninth, we have, we have a meeting, which I'm supposed to come up with some solutions, some answers, some questions, and then, uh, then we have the joint meeting in November. Remember, we have one meeting in November, usually.
Yeah.
Unless we're gonna put two meetings in one after the other.
Talking about keeping things rolling.
All right, uh, that's all I've got, and I don't really have any other, um, there are no other, uh, issues that we have coming.
How's Kate doing?
Walking along.
What about the road or strip?
Don't know. Everything's put, pushed back, Hill, Hill Road's been pushed back, and now they're talking about a line.
And Hill Road?